Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular scheduled meeting of the Beaver Creek City Council. Before we get started this evening, I have a couple proclamations I would like to issue. And so I would first invite Cecilia Bitiguer, Bitigar, I'm sorry, Bitigary, I'm sorry, and Sharon Fulter to join me, please. All right. And you ladies are proud members of the Park Board, is that correct?
Yeah.
All right, that's a great place to be. So I have a proclamation to declare Parks and Rec Month this month, so I would like to read it for you. Whereas Parks and Recreation Programs are an integral part of our community and build healthy, active communities. And whereas Parks and Recreation are vitally important in establishing and maintaining the quality of life and ensuring the health of all Beaver Creek citizens. And whereas Recreation builds family unity, strengthens neighborhood involvement, provides for social interaction, enhances education, develops creativity, and promotes cultural diversity. And whereas Parks and Rec, Parks and Recreation Programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, the attraction and retention of business, and provide beauty for our community, as well as a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate. Rare asders are still common here.
[laughing]
And whereas Parks and Recreation Programs strengthen and enhance our community, making Beaver Creek a safer, healthier, and more enjoyable place to live. Now therefore, I, Bob Stone, Mayor of the City of Beaver Creek, along with the entire City Council and a grateful community, do hereby proclaim the month of July as Parks and Recreation Month in the City of Beaver Creek. So I'd like to present this to you, ladies.
Thank you.
And I would also like to turn the mic over to you two. So which one would like to start?
Go ahead.
Hi, I'm just new to the board, like about a month ago, and I was very fortunate to get a full tour of all the parks that are available to the Beaver Creek residents. And I was just amazed that we have 23 parks for a city this size. And I also would like to applaud the Parks, Recreation, and Culture staff for all the wonderful programs that they're able to provide with the resources they have.
Absolutely. Even offering more than just parks, they offer activities in the parks, and that is a huge resource for others. I was at, with my grandkids, a couple parks this last week, and there were people that come from other areas than Beaver Creek just to play in our Beaver Creek parks, just because they're so good. They have so much to offer. So thank you.
Well, thank you very much. How about a round of applause for these young ladies? [applause] All right, thank you very much. And of course, we, we never forget to mention our staff, and the Parks and Recreation staff is, is just fantastic. They do a real fantastic job. All right, I have another proclamation. I would like to invite Cassie Barlow to join me up here, please. Good evening, Cassie. Okay, we have a proclamation that will, will declare Dayton Regional Intern Appreciation Week. And before I actually start reading this, if you have any extras, I think, aren't we looking for a few interns, chief?
We always have extras.
All right. Well, I'll tell you what, Beaver Creek would love to have a couple extra interns. All right, so whereas, in the era of rapidly changing techniques and new approaches to many aspects of our economic life, the development of skills is of vital importance to the continued security and economic growth of our community. And whereas there are hundreds of interns working in many different industry sectors, not just during the summer, but all throughout the year in the Dayton region. And whereas our local businesses rely on interns to contribute to their organizational missions, including the city. And whereas interns acquire skills that increase job opportunities, earning ability and economic security. And whereas the community is thankful to all the interns who contemplate a full-time position with a local business when they graduate from school. Now therefore, I, Bob Stone, Mayor of the City of Beaver Creek, along with the entire City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of July 12, 2021, through July 16, 2021, as Dayton Regional Intern Appreciation Week in the City of Beaver Creek. Cassie, I would like to present that to you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all the hard work that you do to make this possible.
Thank you. Mayor Stone, thank you so much, and to the, to the entire council, thanks for having me tonight, and thanks for being the first city in our region to declare Intern Appreciation Week. No surprise, no surprise. You can give yourselves a round of applause. You all know that we have over 200,000 college students in our region, and about 60,000 juniors and seniors in high school. And we truly believe that these interns are our, these students are our next generation of workforce. So thank you so much for your support, and we're going to keep pushing jobs for interns. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's get us a picture.
My intern daughter.
Thank you. All right, we have a, a presentation that somebody would like to make to us this evening. And so I'm going to invite the, is it Lisa Oxendine?
Yeah.
Hello, Lisa, how are you?
Good, how are you?
I'm very well. And Kim, if you would join me up here. You know, our fireworks don't happen just out of circumstance. We need support. And we have had some tremendous support from UES for many, many years. So before you do anything, I would just start, start by saying thank you, and then I'm going to give you the mic and let you do what you need to do.
You're welcome. So UES has been in business in Beaver Creek for over 45 years. We're a science and research, technology research company, and a lot of our employees work at the base. So we have a lot of people joining us. We've experienced a lot of growth. And so we bring a lot of people to the Dayton area. So anything Beaver Creek City Council can do to make it an attractive area is helpful for us and for the base to get people to come here. So on behalf of UES, we're all very happy that we can get together again this year in person for fireworks. So we want to donate this check to you.
Well, look at that. I'm going to hand it over here, let Kim hold that side. Isn't that just fantastic, ladies and gentlemen? I believe that was a $20,000 check. And, and this goes hand in hand with Parks and Recreation proclamation, because this is going to end one of our parks. And so it's a, it's just another good use of one of our parks. So thank you, very well. And it's just, you would like to say a word or two, wouldn't you?
Hi, Kim, if you would like me to. That's a loaded question, sir. Yeah, we're very fortunate to have UES in our community and to donate to our 4th of July celebration once again. For those of you who are not aware, at 6 o'clock, we will start with a parade that goes down Dayton Zina Road from Meadow Bridge to the high school. And then we invite everybody back to Rotary Park at 7 o'clock for food trucks. We'll have a band. And then, of course, at 10:00 PM, we will have the UES fireworks. So we're really excited to be out there with everybody around. It'll be a great time.
All right. Well, thank you one more time.
[inaudible]
All right. Thank you. You take the, you cash the check, and I'll go, I'll put the podium back. Once again, a, a thanks to all the people that got the proclamations, because they were well deserved. And thanks again to UES for, for the check, and it's going to be a wonderful fireworks. So at this point, I'd like to call our regular session of our meeting to order. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bales?
Here.
Councilmember Current?
Here.
Councilmember Duer?
Here.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwartz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Adams?
Here.
Mayor Stone?
Here. I hear a motion.
So move to excuse Vice Councilmember Garcia?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to excuse Councilmember Garcia. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion carries. I would like to turn this meeting over for a second to Councilmember Duer for the pledge in a moment of silence.
Thank you, Mayor.
Please join me in the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There was a fire in my neighborhood at 4:00 AM this morning, and I'm thankful that none of my neighbors were hurt, that everyone was okay. But it got me thinking again. The city manager does a great job of keeping us updated. There are, in a city our size, we have a number of fires. And I'm very thankful for men and women who put themselves in harm's way so that we can be safe. Of course, the, the fire department is located in the township, so it requires a lot of great cultivation of relationship with the mayor, the city manager, and many others alongside the fire chief and those in the township. But I'm very thankful for the great response and all that they do, not just in terms of fires, but EMT services, and especially everything with COVID this past year. I was on the FEMA website looking at the US Fire Administration. There have been 51 fatalities this year of firefighters alone. So please join me in a moment of silent prayer for firefighters and their families. Thank you, everyone.
We have an agenda before us this evening. Any corrections or changes?
Move to approve the agenda, Your Honor.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. We have a set of minutes from the June 14th in front of us. Any changes? Motion?
Move to approve the minutes of June 14th.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the June 14th. Regular scheduled meeting as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries.
Mayor Epstein.
Thank you. Next, public hearing, PUD 13-5, specific site plan number one.
Case number PUD 13-5, SSP number one, on an application filed by Synergy Building Systems, John Koppelcheck, 3500 Pentagon Boulevard, Suite 500, Beaver Creek, Ohio, 45431. The applicant requests specific site plan approval to allow for the construction of an 85,000 square foot office building on approximately five acres. The property is located at 3875 Germany Lane, further described as Book One, Page Nine, Parcells 83, 85, 86, 87, 88, 89, 90, and 91, on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. As the applicant present tonight, would you like to make a presentation?
Sure.
Please come forward, give us a name and address, please.
My name is John Koppelcheck, the applicant, 3500 Pentagon Boulevard in Beaver Creek. Thank you, Mayor, for the security blanket back of the podium. I appreciate it. So we do have the specific site plan in front of you tonight for Project Promotum. As it was stated, it is about an 85,000 square foot, three-story building on Germany Lane that we purchased about five acres of property and are redeveloping that for this new office building. And happy to answer any questions after Randy's presentation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Andy?
Senator.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. The case you have before you is PUD 13-5. It is the Project Promotum specific site plan. This is the first specific site plan within the PUD 13-5. It was rezoned several years ago and sat vacant, and Mills, Synergy had bought the, brought, bought the property in 2020 and did an amendment to allow for a few other uses, but moved forward with this 85,000 square foot office building that you have this evening. The project's located in far northwest Beaver Creek. It's actually on the south side of Colonel Glenn, about 200 feet east of where Colonel Glenn and Germany Lane meet. Seen here, highlighted in blue, is the five acre area that we are under discussion this evening. You can see from the aerial, there were houses out front. I believe one of these was a former commercial establishment. I think it was Hookah Bar. Before that, I think it was the old submarine house. And then there's, there was a garage facility out here on the far east corner, and then some older vehicles that were left out in the elements, as well as a lot of landscaping trees and shrubbery on site. This site has since been, most, or all of the buildings have been demolished, and it sits as a vacant site right now. It does have frontage on, on Germany Lane. This is formerly Wine Coop Court. As City Council may remember, it's been recently vacated, and half the property went to the Extended Stay Hotel, and the other half went to the Synergy Development Corporation as part of the vacation. Again, this property highlighted here in the, the pink area is what consists of PUD 13-5. To the west is B2, and it's an existing office building. And then to the east is, I'm sorry, B3. And then to the east is also B3, and that's the Extended Stay Hotel. If you'll notice with this abocation, some of the parking lot that they're proposing, along with a detention pond, is within this B3 property. So some of the development is outside of the PUD, but parking lots and detention facilities, especially associated with office developments, is allowed use within the B3 zoning district. So combine the uses that they're proposing within the PUD, along with the uses they're proposing in the B3 portion of the property, this is allowable use within the zoning code. Seen here is the proposed site plan. You can see the building is on the far south side of the site. Just to get a perspective on the size, it's about the size of a football field. It's about 300 feet long and about 150 feet deep. So from a size dimension, that's about the size of a football field. They're proposing one access point along the former Wine Coop Road here, which will create an access drive in front of the building, and then a second access point along, or right off of Germany Lane. You can see here is public right of way where later this year, we're going to be actually constructing Zink Road, and that's going to punch through the, there's an existing tree line there, and that'll punch right out to Colonel Glenn. There was early discussion on why can't we get the access point on Germany Lane to line directly up with Zink Road. And that was something that I discussed at length with the applicant. But the way the building is laid out, they're going to have some overhead doors and drop-off areas within the building here. And if, if they were, and for a time, you know, when trucks do deliver, they'll be blocking this portion of the building, and to have that access point lined up directly with Zink would cause some severe congestion, congestion on the site. So it's really not a huge site, so it's not really a problem that it doesn't line up. Where we want to get that lined up more often is if it's a retail center where you're going to have in and out traffic all day long, whereas office developments, typically there'll be a heavy portion in the morning, heavy portion in the evening. But it, but just wanted to point that out. In terms of parking, based on the, the proposed use of an office space, they're required by our code to have 270 park, or I'm sorry, 241 parking spaces. And combined with the parking field to the east, as well as the parking field north of the building, they're showing 269 parking spaces. So they, they meet the minimum requirements, as they do also meet the minimum requirements for the amount of impervious surface allowed on site. Developments within PUDs can only have a maximum of 25% of the site, a minimum 25% of the site has to be impervious surface. And they're showing a little bit more than that, 27% of the site. Again, just wanted to give you kind of a highlighted view of the building versus the access points. This will be a combined access point for both the hotel and, and the office site. They are maintaining this access point into the hotel. It's an existing access point off of Wine Cup, and they didn't want to change anything with that. So that, that access point, so that the hotel, hotel patrons won't have any change to their entry and, and exit from the site. And of course, the hotel's going to maintain their access point on Germany Lane as well. Seen here is a 3D rendering of the building. A majority of it is the red and beige brick. And they're also proposing a white and, white, a combination of white, beige, and brown EPAS material. And then you can see on all four elevations of the building, they're showing these two-story red brick columnar features. And that gives a, a good, it, it kind of breaks up the height of the building. It's a 46-foot tall building, but these kind of break it up into sections, and so it doesn't feel like such a tall building, or a long building, or a wide building. And those features are carried around on all four sides of the building. Their landscape plan, as we're accustomed to, they do have a good amount of evergreen and decorative shrubs and grasses and trees. We did have them add a few more evergreen shrubs along this eastern property line to help block the headlights for the parking spots to the, on the western side from this building to the west. But they do have a good mixture of landscaping for the site. In terms of signage, they're proposing signs on both the north and the south elevations of the building. Now, they haven't come out with a tenant yet, so we have no real design of a sign, but did want to give you some basic language on 125 square feet of, of wall signage on both the north and the south elevation. They also aren't, they haven't shown any kind of a ground sign, so we have nothing to bring forward in terms of that. But we did add a condition that if, in the future, they do want a ground sign, that it has to meet what we typically would see in B3, which is 32 square feet per sign phase, and five feet tall. Also added a condition that all the mechanical equipment, whether it be roof mounted or ground mounted, needs to be screened from all directions, whether they use roof forms or landscaping, depending on if it's on the building or on the, on the ground. And also, I just wanted to point out that impact fees will need to be paid with this application. Planning Commission and staff both recommend approval of the applicant's request. There are 18 conditions in your motion for your consideration this evening, and I will be happy to answer questions following the public hearing.
All right, thank you. And this is a public hearing, so there will be one present this evening that would like to address council in relation to this application. Anyone? Seeing none, we will move on to council input. Councilmember Bales, you want to start us off?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. I've got a couple of questions, Randy. First, Mr. Koppelcheck, thank you very much for your investment in the community. Again, fantastic looking building, and I'm sure it will be a big asset. You answered a lot of my questions in your proposal. I assume that the Zink, the Zink Road project was in the works, according to your document, and this may have just accelerated it. Do you think that it will be done about the same time as the building, or beforehand?
I think it'll be done before the building. I know that the applicant wants to move along very quickly, but we've already got, we've already got preliminary plans for Zink. If anything, it'll be done at the same time, but our intent is to get Zink Road done this year.
That's great. The three overhead doors for deliveries, there's parking spaces on the plan in front of those. It was confusing to me as to how that would work if those were delivery doors right there.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, obviously, if they are parking, that was one of the, why, why they parked heavy, in terms of, you know, they're required to have 100, 240, and they got 270, just to have that extra overflow parking. Because if there are people delivering, then those spots won't be able to be used. But they also intend to deliver more on the off-hours of the, they'll be there before the patrons come in.
Okay.
They could be there while the patrons are coming in, but, or while the office workers are coming in, but they intend it.
I just imagine trying to track down someone in an office who had parked in front of the delivery door would be challenging. The last question I had was on that southeast corner. Looks like there's, what, like 12, 12 feet to the ODOT right of way? It's really tight. That, that meets the setback requirement?
Yeah, I mean, there was no official setbacks within this PUD. And if this was private property, then we would, we'd be a little bit more hesitant on getting on getting the building that close, but this is ODOT right-of-way that's a steep hill that's not, I mean, it's never going to be anything but ODOT right-of-way, so, and it's fairly well landscaped as well on the side of that hill. So being public right-of-way for an off, or I guess an off-ramp, you know, 12 feet is, you know, we weren't concerned with the distance on that.
I'm good, thanks.
All right, Councilmember Durr?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to start by thanking Randy and your staff for your eye for detail across all of what we see today. There's really some fantastic work planning ahead, the Zink Road extension as well example. So thank you and your staff. I'd also like to echo Councilmember Bales' statements to the developer, thank you for your investment in Beaver Creek. I'd like to follow up quickly with a question from Planning Commission that Councilmember Bales mentioned. So it's about 12 feet from the southeast corner to the right-of-way. How far is it to the area where it drops off? I mean, is it, is it stable for a while? I couldn't tell, there's a fence there now, and how much space is there until it actually kind of falls off, because it's quite a steep embankment there?
There'll be, when they come up with the final construction drawings, there's going to be a lot of standards for them to follow in terms of if they get too close, they'll have to put a retaining wall, so they won't get to the point where the building's going to, I mean, basically erode around the foundation down the hill, if that's, that's the concern, yeah. I mean, they'll have some sort of retaining system if, if the grades are such that they are over the three to one and too close.
Forgive my eyesight, are there fire exits on this side of the building or the back of the building?
Pull one up here.
I couldn't quite tell, so.
I mean, there are access points, I mean, I don't know, there, I mean, there are exits on the building.
Sure.
But not specifically for fire, but yeah, I mean, they're.
And what's the distance from those access points to Retentions Pond C and D? Because they're quite tight as well.
No, we're talking over here.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, I mean, they've got, we've made sure that they have that sidewalk, they've got a five-foot sidewalk coming out of the building, so that there is, I mean, this is going to be a dry pond, so it's not, it's not a water-surface pond, so it's just a depression. And the fire department has reviewed the plans and they don't have a problem with the design as it's laid out.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Schwartz?
Most of my questions have been answered by my fellow council members, but I do just want to thank Synergy for their continued development in Beaver Creek. You always have wonderful designs, wonderful products, very well thought out, so we appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilmember Byrne?
Same here, Your Honor. I think my questions have been answered, and again, a big thank you for development here in the community. Thank you, sir.
Pleasure, Mayor.
Well, I can say ditto, because I think most of my questions have been answered. I do like to thank you for choosing Beaver Creek to build again. That's an area over there that really is going to be improved by your building, there's no question about it.
Pretty much so.
And I'm excited about that, so thank you very much.
I just had one issue, and that's when you had the face of the building showing up there and it said signage across the top. I've not heard of that company.
It's a new company.
All right. But no, it's, there's a lot going on in the region, there's a lot of office being built, and this will be another feather in our cap, so thank you. Anybody else have anything for the good? If not, I'll accept the motion.
Mayor, I move for the purpose of taking administrative action, approval of specific site plan for Project Promotum on the basis that City Council finds the facts submitted with the application and accompanying materials and modifications, amendments, and supplementary conditions satisfy the standards and criteria for a specific site plan as per Section 158.066 of the zoning code. Supplementary conditions required of this approval shall be as follows, which there are 18. I further move that this motion with all conditions be fully recorded in the minutes of this City Council meeting.
Second?
I have a motion and a second, as we've just read. Anything for the good? Long favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same? Motion carries, thank you. Thank you. Next is Public Hearing, PUD 97-1, modification 421.
Case number PUD 97-1, mod 4-21. On an application filed by the Kleinger's Group, 6219 Center Park Drive, West Chester, Ohio, 45069. The application requests a major modification to the specific site plan to allow for the construction of a 14,650-square-foot freestanding emergency department building located directly to the south of 2440 Lakeview Drive. The properties are further described as Book 4, Page 6, Parcel 122, and part of Parcel 116 on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. Is there an applicant present that might want to make a presentation or comment? Good evening.
Good evening, thank you.
Can you name an address, please?
Yes, sir. My name is Lyle Stiles. I live at 938 North Fort Thomas Avenue, Fort Thomas, Kentucky. I'm with Cushman and Wakefield. I'm a senior construction project manager and I'm representing Hartman One LLC. It's a single-purpose entity that is operating on behalf of our healthcare client to not only acquire this nine-and-a-half-acre property, but work to develop it for this new freestanding emergency department that'll help better serve the 24/7 healthcare needs of the community. So I've been working with our development partner, which is Remedy Medical Properties. They're represented by Mr. Scott Lieberman as an agent for Remedy Medical, and Beaver Creek APL MP LLC, which is a single-purpose entity that owns the adjacent medical office I do have members of our design team with Champlin Architecture and Kleinger's and Associates. They're here with me to help answer any questions should they arise. We have read through the staff report and we're accepting of all the conditions that will be presented.
All right, very good, thank you. And we will hear from staff right now.
The case you have before you is PUD 97-1. It's a major modification to the existing site plan. The applicant's requesting a modification so that they can construct a single-story, 14,000-square-foot emergency medical office building adjacent to an existing office building. The whole site is about 16.8 acres. It's located in northern Beaver Creek, just northeast of the intersection of North Fairfield and Kemp. And highlighted in blue here is the 17-acre area we're discussing this evening. You can see Kemp Road here down south and North Fairfield here, road to the, to the west, and this is the Fairfield Place along with Chick-fil-A and Grater's and City Barbecue. The property, again, is Zone 97-1. This was rezoned in 1997 and went through a few legal procedures to get to the zoning as where we are this evening. And based on the legal opinion, the legal settlement that was, a settlement between the city, the owners, and the residential neighbors to the east, what they're proposing this evening is compliant with that settlement. The property to the east is, is of our PUD, but really it's a, it's a mound, it's a screening buffer between this and the R1A property to the east of that. To the north and to the east and to the south are all commercially developed, commercially-developed properties. One thing with this application is they're proposing to move, and it's a little easier to see on this, this slide here, this is the existing access point from the medical office building, and what they're proposing is to move that slightly to the north and convert it to a right-out and a right-in only. And, and I'll show in a little bit, but this is, this is to help discourage people going into that from using Lakeview Drive and to help traffic, you know, avoid the successful restaurant to the east and the traffic that was included with that. So I just want to point that out, and they'll also be removing several parking spaces, but as you'll see on the proposed site plan, they're going to be constructing many more than they're removing, so they're still going to meet the requirements. Yeah, again, they're removing 42 parking spaces. Now, with this proposed development, they will have three access points to the site, the main being here coming off of the Boulevard access point of the shopping center where it accesses North Fairfield Road. You'd get up to the, this private access drive that parallels North Fairfield, and actually, the users of this parallel road, they have stop signs here and here. So when you're coming in, just like if you're going to the mall at Fairfield Commons where you go in and you have the right-of-way to keep going the direction you want to go, so that we're not backing traffic out onto North Fairfield. So you'll have the right-of-way when you're coming into the development. Again, we'll have this proposed right-in and right-out, and then they're also constructing a secondary, a tertiary access point off of this existing private access drive so that there is additional full in-and-out access to the proposed development, as you Now, in total, based on the square footage of the existing building and in combination with the square footage of the, of the freestanding ER, the calculation states they were required to have a little over 200 parking spaces, but with this combined, they'll have 362 parking spaces. So there's no concern with them not having enough parking. I know that some of the existing users of the site have parking that kind of spills over into the other users. There's a, in the covenants and restrictions, the private covenants and restrictions that are on this site, there is a cross-parking agreement, shopping center-wide, but there's no concern with what they're proposing that it create any kind of shortages, and I actually think it'll help if there were shortages out there. They're lessening that shortage by having an excessive amount of parking. Again, we talked about the access point, and just wanted to show, kind of give you an idea, this is the existing building, there are proposed freestanding ER here, and then someday, sometime in the future is when, if and when, when this, this extra land develops, and should that happen, it'll have to come back to Planning Commission and City Council, so there's no, there's no condition that allows that to move forward without any, without an additional PUD modification or new specific site plan, depending on what they want to come in. In terms of the building, again, it's a single-story building and they're proposing brown brick and a brown stone base on all four sides. They do have some white metal panels and white ephesus on all four sides of the building. It's slightly different in terms of architectural design from the existing building, but it's still, it's a good complement. It has some of the existing, some of the features of the existing building, but it also brings its own style to the, to the site, especially, you've got the red canopy, which kind of really yells out emergency or ambulance, so you, you want that on an emergency room, you want, you know, people to be able to see that from far away and know where it is. So they do have the emergency signs and ambulance signs on the, on the two canopies, one on each side of the two canopies. And this is just to get an idea of the scope of the building as it relates to the existing building and the access drive that parallels the building. And how, again, it'll look a lot better than this block that I drew out there, but just wanted to give an idea of how it will look from North Fairfield Road. In terms of landscaping, you can see they do include a lot of landscaping on the newly constructed parking spaces to the south and to the east. They're also proposing to extend the six-foot evergreen on top of the, I think it's 15-foot tall mound on the eastern edge of the property to help screen any kind of noise or, or building that might be able to be seen from that, but it, it's a pretty tall screening feature out there now, and then you add the six-foot trees, I think that overall will help the, the site in general. But they, again, they do have a good landscaping plan that complements the existing landscaping out on-site. In terms of signage, as I stated, they're, they're going to have signage on the two canopies, one on the eastern, southern end of the building and one on the western end of the building, and that will delineate where the ambulance and the emergency room and give a good idea of where ambulances are supposed to come in and drop off people into the emergency room is here on the south end of the building.
Interesting.
They'll also have a good amount of ground signage with a brick-based sign out on Kemp Road where this private access drive meets Kemp Road, and then a few ground signs out on the private access drive, helping to show the tenants of the existing building and the tenants of the future building, as well as good directional signs to get people to the ambulance bay and the emergency bay. It's important that people get there and know how to get there pretty quickly with this type of building, so what they're proposing is in line with what a development of this size would, would show. Just want to go for a few of the select conditions in the motion for your consideration. One is that because there's that six or seven acres to the south of the building, you know, there's no plans for it right now, we wanted to include the condition that if some of that gets disturbed and no construction occurs, and they do have to seat it with appropriate ground cover to make sure that it's not just dirt piles for the next five years or anything like that. So there is a requirement for that. Also, with this site being in an impact fee district, impact fees are applicable with this development. Any of the gutters, downspouts, or ladders should not be visible from the outside of the building, that they need to be internally mounted, and that fixtures in the parking lot, A, they need to be in, within landscape islands, but also they need to be substantially similar to the parking lot fixtures that are out there now. The ones that are out there now are fairly new, so I don't think they'll have a problem matching them up with the existing. If they're 15 years or older, then it's hard to get them to be like-for-like, but I think that they should be able to get, if not the exact, a very, very similar light fixture, so there's no apparent change in light styles. Also, forwarded this to my bikeway advisory committee and they asked for a bike rack to be put out, and so we did add a condition that a bike rack be installed, and it doesn't have to be the large, huge, traditional 10, 10-bike, bike rack, just some sort of feature out there, and there's a lot of creative ways to have a bike rack, but something out there to help the non-motorized transportation users use this facility as well. Planning Commission and staff both recommend approval. Within your motion, there are 22 conditions of approval, but I will be here to answer any questions following the public hearing.
Thank you. All right, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone present this evening that would like to address counsel on this application? Anyone? Seeing none, we will move on, close the public input, and we'll start on the left this time. How about Councilmember Byrne, you'd like to start us off?
Couple of questions. What's the distance, Randy, between these two buildings?
I, I couldn't. They're actually going to be attached by a covered walkway.
Oh, they're attached? Oh, really?
Yeah.
All right, I'm sorry, I didn't get that. What about the retention?
There's an existing detention, or retention, if I can get to the picture, sorry. I believe it, Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's up in this area.
All right, okay.
Is that gap there between the houses?
Right here, sorry. There's a, and that was sized and constructed to account for the entire shopping center.
All right. What's the balance of the acreage then, that'll be available for development, did you say?
I want to say it's probably around seven acres that'll be available.
Thank you. Councilmember Schwartz?
I have two questions. First is, as it relates to the traffic pattern and kind of the entrance and egress, I do appreciate how they changed the entrance on the other side to help prevent traffic flow, but seeing as though there's no real, I guess someone could come in that way anyways. Has this been run, I guess, let me just factor, has this been run by the fire department? Is there any concern getting ambulances in and out with these access points?
There was, and that's why they, they constructed this.
Just that?
That road. That was, they didn't want just a sole access point right there, so that's how this road got created.
From every direction, okay, good. And then my second question- And then my second question is, was there any consideration, and maybe it's because they don't own the land there, but has there been any consideration of putting signage on North Fairfield Road at that middle entrance?
Well, this is, there's a sign here in this median, and that's for the shopping center in general. They may get a tenant space on that, but no additional, they're going to have a sign out here on this median. But it would be up to them to work out a deal to get something on the, on the pylon sign that's out. We try to limit as much signage out on our public right of way as possible, so.
Okay. Another question, thank you.
Councilmember Dewar.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank the applicant for the investment in Beaver Creek. Thank you for your desire to continue improving our community, so thank you. A lot of my questions have been answered by my fellow council members. I just have one that I'd like to dot the i, cross the t.
Sure.
Took a drive through the El Cid neighborhood yesterday, tried to survey what it would look like. I haven't seen any feedback from the community. Have you heard anything else?
You know, honestly, I haven't gotten anything, I don't know if we've got anything written, but I haven't heard anything. You know, I would say about five, six, seven years ago, we took something that was going to be quite a bit taller and heard a lot of feedback at that time. And my guess is they saw this and didn't have the concern, I mean, this is a single-story.
It looks covered from my view, and adding the trees is a very nice touch.
I think the sheer distance, I mean, you're 500, 400, 500 feet away from those homes, too.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Vales.
I think I just have a question for the applicant. First of all, thank you for investing in Beaver Creek. It's great. I'm glad that you were able to successfully address the congestion concerns on the private road. That is a big, big problem. My question is fairly simple. When looking at your new building as opposed to the existing one that's fairly new anyway, what was your thought process on changing the colors? It looks like, you know, they complement one another, and I don't think it's bad. I just wanted to know your kind of thought process on that.
So the existing building has seven or eight or nine different building materials. We picked three of them and are matching the color and the texture of those, in addition to using the white metal panels to kind of provide some separation and some backdrop. So we are using several of the same building materials, just not all of them. So it will be complementary.
It looks good, so I think it'll be great. No questions.
Vice Mayor Adams.
I just wanted to make sure that those access points, they'll be open at the time the building is open, correct? All three of them?
Absolutely.
Yeah, because that, as Councilmember Vales said, that's a nightmare back in there. Training people not to use Lakeview is going to be a little tough. But the other thing, I had the lights on the east side towards the homes. I know this is a 24/7 operation, so, I mean, and they'll have to have lighting a little different than we have, like at a bank where it goes down to 25%. But how are they set up so they don't affect the neighbors back there?
So the light posts, as were mentioned, will match the existing, so that's a restricted height, so they're not going to be, I think they're 30 feet or less, maybe even 25 feet. But the light is generally directed down. And in the point-by-point studies that we've done, and I believe one was included in the submittal package, it does cast the light only primarily on the parking surfaces, and it doesn't bleed over past any of the property lines. So again, since they're focused down, it should not. And in fact, if there's the 15 or so foot tall earthen mound over on the east side, there should not be any effect at all onto the adjacent residential properties.
Thank you very much, and thank you for this project.
Sure.
Could you just stay there just a second?
Yes, sir.
Just for curiosity's sake and a little bit, I know at one point there was talk about having, creating a new access point on the, at the existing building on the east end of the property on the lake.
On the Lakeview.
Has that been discussed at all on this, with this addition? Or is that something that's still, maybe even our engineering department can say that's still something that's acceptable?
Yeah, I believe that the type of road that Lakeview is, it does not allow for any additional curb cuts out there. They may be desired by the existing property owner because it could provide additional beneficial access, but I don't believe it's allowed or permitted because of the speed of the road and the ownership of the road.
All right, well, I'll ask staff that same question here in a minute. I just, the other part of it was simply to, just to explain, this is an ER, emergency, but is it the same degree ER that is attached normally to a hospital? Is it like a glorified or expanded urgent care?
It is not an urgent care. They will treat whatever traumas come to the facility. So it is an emergency department as you would have in a hospital, absolutely.
And stabilized and moved on to a facility.
If the case may be, if the, if someone needs to be transported elsewhere, they'd be stabilized and treated. But they will treat everyone that comes.
All right, thank you very much. So now I would like to ask our engineering department about an access on Lakeview. I mean, that road's only 25 miles an hour, which I have an issue with, too, but that's a different question.
Yes, good evening, yeah, happy to answer that, Mayor. There's a, when we looked at it before, there was a, I believe there was a grading issue as far as like the existing parking lot. Where it sits vertically relative to the road, it would be a difficult transition to build, without building an overly steep driveway into the parking lot. You know, if they were to come back and want to regrade their parking lot to have a more, more suitable grade on an access point, we could, I think we could work something out, certainly. But it would take a lot of work, I believe, to make that happen.
All right, so currently it's just not financially feasible, probably.
Yes.
All right, because I, you know, we're going to have some correction to the Chick-fil-A issue, but it's still going to be, it's still going to be tight in there. But we'll see. So anyway, as far as the applicant goes, keep that in the back of your mind. If need be, you know, it's something you can consider down the road, and staff will try to work with you. Okay. And that is all I have for right now. Once again, thanks for your expanding services here in Beaver Creek. So entertain a motion.
I move for the purpose of taking administrative action, approval on a specific site plan for freestanding ERs, PUD 97-1, MOD 4-21, on the basis that city council finds the facts submitted. With the application and accompanying materials and modifications, amendments, and supplementary conditions satisfy the standards and criteria for a specific site plan as per section 158.070 of the zoning code. Supplementary conditions required of this approval shall be as follows, which there are 22. I further move that this motion, with all the conditions, be fully recorded in the minutes of this council meeting.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second that you just heard read by Councilmember Dewar. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries, thank you. Thank you. Next is public hearing, PC 21-1.
Case number PC 21-1, for the purpose of reviewing and update of the zoning code.
All right. We do not have an applicant today, so we'll take a scratch at one through.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of city council. As I'm sure you all have become accustomed to, we are here tonight to discuss an update to the city Beaver Creek zoning code. For the most part, we've been doing these updates on a nearly annual basis. And a few months ago, we did come before city council in a work session to kind of bounce some ideas off of you guys concerning some of the topics that will be addressed in this proposal. One of the first things that we're going to talk about are the accessory dwelling units and granny pods. So we've had a lot of interest over the past few years about having family members, you know, living much close by. And a lot of people have expressed interest in kind of these smaller accessory units that could be placed in the rears of properties. So staff has added a proposal to the zoning code that would allow for these granny pods or granny flats within A1, R1A, and R1AA zoning districts. They would require conditional use approval. So with that conditional use request, it would have to go before the planning commission before it could be constructed. And we did add a few provisions within that that would require that the maximum square footage be 600 square feet, and that it be no taller than 16 feet in height, and there would be one per parcel. So it would be similar to any other accessory structure or garage on a property. The maximum square footage would still count towards the maximum allowed square footage for, for any residential property either. So even if they do already have a garage, a detached garage, this would still count towards that, so they couldn't have this in addition to that. We did add some additional restrictions as far as setbacks go. We made provision that the, the structure would need to meet the setbacks for the respective zoning districts. So for instance, with an R1A zoning district, the required setback, the rear yard setback is 50 feet, the front yard setback is 40 feet. So it would still have to meet those same requirements. However, they do need to be located behind the main structure. So it wouldn't be able to be installed next, beside the house or in a detached garage, you know, couldn't convert a detached garage that's next to the house. That, that wouldn't work. And at this time, we just want to kind of ease into, to these regulations and kind of feel things out and see how they go before we, you know, move on and just like fully allow them. So we want to just be a little bit cautious about how we approach this to see how it works and see if in the future, you know, we can, we can make some additional regulations that might ease some of the restrictions as far as the setbacks and everything go. So we just want to figure out if there are any, any issues that could arise. And again, this would still need to go through the conditional use approval with the planning commission before they could install this type of structure. One of the second items, one of the second big items that we wanted to discuss this evening was the swimming pool fencing requirements that we currently have. Currently, on any lots within the city Beaver Creek, you are required to have a five-foot tall fence. However, if you have a one-acre lot and have an automatic pool cover, you can have a 42-inch fence. So we changed these regulations a few years back, and in that time, we've had discussions with pool companies and residents who have interest in these automated pool covers, and then also in doing research with other cities, and then additional research on, on how these pool covers work and some of the statistics. We found that the automated pool covers are much safer than fences. The majority of accidents, drownings that happen in swimming pools are actually from the residents that live in the house, not from someone coming over a fence and getting into a swimming pool. And so with an automated pool cover, you're preventing that from happening. So we added some provisions that would require that if you do have an automated pool cover, it would have to be closed when the pool is not being used. And the change that we made was that if you're on a lot that's at least 10,000 square feet, you can have an automated pool cover, but you have to have a 42-inch fence. If you have a lot that's over an acre, then no fence would be required, as long as you have that automated pool cover. And these pool covers, they're not just a flimsy kind of cover. They're rigid, there are certain standards that have to be met for these pool covers. They can hold several people standing on them, and, and they close within, you know, within a couple of minutes, just by the push of a button. And then for swimming pools that do not have an automated pool cover, the regulations are not changing, you would still be required to have a minimum five-foot tall fence. And then just a couple of smaller changes that we're proposing. The lot width in mixed PUDs, it currently states that the lot width has to be 80 feet, and we've reduced that to 60. And that's not, that's not actually a change, a change as far as what we've been doing. It's when we, when we made changes, I want to say it was 10 years ago, in the residential PUDs, from 80 feet to 60 feet, we didn't change it in the MXPUD. And so we just want to be consistent and make that same change that's already in the residential PUD as well. Then the maximum number of trailers in residential zoning districts currently, our max number of recreational vehicles is limited to two outside of a fully enclosed building. And we've had some issues with people having, you know, not only their RV and their, their boat and their trailer, but then they'll have another trailer. And we didn't specifically talk about trailers in the code, so it doesn't really apply. So we made some, just a couple of adjustments in that section that includes trailers in that kind of recreational vehicle category, and limited it as well to the two. And if you have more than that, they just need to be kept inside of a building. And then also, we are addressing vehicle stacking in drive-through restaurant lanes. This is something that we talked about at the work session previously. And currently, our vehicle stacking requirement is based on a formula, depending on the amount of time that a restaurant tells us that, you know, each order takes to get through. And we don't really have the flexibility to be able to require more. So whenever someone comes in for an application for a drive-through within a restaurant, you know, they simply have to meet the requirement that we have in the zoning code. And we don't, we don't have anything to be able to say, okay, well, we, after our analysis and our review during the planning process, we feel that additional stacking would be necessary for this site. So with this change, we added that planning commission and our city council would be, would have the ability to require additional drive-through stacking. And when we say planning commission and our city council, you know, we're working in our review on your part. So when we go through that review and analysis, we can point to that section of the code when they say, well, we already meet the requirement. And we would be able to say, okay, well, we don't think this meets the, we don't think this is enough stacking. So, you know, if you don't agree to additional stacking, we would have the ability to recommend this approval. Whereas right now, we don't have that ability because it specifically states in the code, this is how many stacking spaces that you need. So what we added into the code is that if, if there is a, a drive-through restaurant establishment that we, that staff feels may spill out onto a thoroughfare, a public thoroughfare, we have the ability to be able to require additional stacking. And obviously, we didn't anticipate the pandemic, we didn't anticipate the amount of drive-through traffic that we were going to be having at all of these restaurants within the city. And this gives us that flexibility and the ability to be able to anticipate some issues. And then to be able to not just take the word of a corporate, you know, a corporate restaurant when they tell us, oh, this is how quickly we get through, and then we have the restaurant, and it's actually not the case. So we can use this for that, and then also, you know, be able to do our own research and look at the other, you know, restaurants in that same chain to understand really, you know, how long it takes for each car to get through that drive-through line. So that, that is why we're proposing that change in the drive-through section as it is. And then additionally, one more change that we spoke about in our work session had to do with the non-conforming structures following disasters. Previously, we, our code states that when a structure is destroyed by more than 60%, it has to be brought into current compliance. And so the proposal that we're making is if there's a natural disaster, a tornado, or even a fire, that if there's an existing foundation that can be used, that foundation would still be able to be used. If that existing foundation cannot be used, then the structure would need to be brought into compliance. And then finally, we just added a minimum required footprint in the A1 agricultural zoning district for residential structures. We didn't have one at all before, so we just made it consistent with the minimum 1,200 square foot that is permitted in, in our residential districts. And then we just had a couple of changes in the permitted uses, which were just inconsistencies and redundancies, nothing major in the scheduled permitted uses. So obviously, we're recommending approval, and if you have any questions, I can answer those following the public hearing.
All right, thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. This is a public hearing time. Is there anyone present this evening that would like to address counsel on this proposal?
Harold Lewis, 23 Town Hall. I want to talk about this stacking.
Well, Harold, you know we appreciate the three-minute rule. Thank you.
I understand. First of all, what do you mean by potential? That's in the eyes of the beholder. Your definition of potential, my definition, your definition of potential at a restaurant, it's going to be different. The second thing is, when you look at this code, go to section with the definition section, it defines a drive-through, okay? But then when you go to the section here, you get a totally different definition of a drive-through. So at least, let's make the definition of a drive-through consistent throughout this code. And then, let's just, let's just take Dunkin' Donuts. It's still stacking up. If McGrath Way was open, you wouldn't be able to go down McGrath Way. There's no way you could have asked for any more parking spots at Dunkin' Donuts. So it would automatically have been disapproved. There's no way you could put anymore. And that's what's going to happen when you start coming to counsel after the fact. The land's a certain size at these places. You're not going to get any more parking spaces. This has to be re-looked somehow. Right now, Panera Bread, if you try to turn in off of Dayton-Zenia Road, it can be a nightmare right now. And it's not even school time. I went down there to try to go down North Fairfield. I sat behind two cars trying to turn in because I didn't know what was in front of them. It was empty, but I didn't know that. This whole thing, my, you know, we discuss this at McDonald's every morning, things like this. And this was a joke this morning. One guy said, well, let's require a two-story parking garage because that's what you're going to have to start doing if you're going to have the potential of an issue. Okay, it's, it's, I don't know. There's other things in the zoning code, in my opinion, that should be addressed. Signage, for example. Every time we have an election, I go around, look at all the signs, go down to City Hall, say, they don't have permits. You're right. Why don't they have a permit? Well, we'll call them. Two weeks later, no, nothing's been done. Either fix it or change it or delete it. The signage code, I can go down Dayton-Zenia Road right now and find five signs that are illegal, put up there temporarily. Five. Doesn't city staff go up and down these roads? Let's fix the code that needs to be fixed and not nonsense like vehicle stacking in drive-throughs when we don't even know what the definition is. We don't know what the definition is. And then it's going to come to you people after the fact. The lot size is there, you're not going to get one more parking spot, not one. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to address counsel? Seeing none, we will close the public input. We did have one. Do we have any other additional written besides the one that Mr. Lewis just reviewed for us?
State no.
Okay, thank you. All right, counsel input. Let's start with Councilmember Schwartz.
Thank you, Mayor. So I do have a few questions for staff. And it kind of, some of them go along the same lines of what Mr. Lewis was discussing. So first, for pools, do we have a definition of pool covers? Of automated pool covers?
I don't know that we have a definition, but what we added into the section is that it has to meet the requirements of the American Society for Testing Materials. And it actually has the number. So they would, it wouldn't have, like, they couldn't just come up with their own random pool cover and say, this is, you know, this is my pool cover.
Okay. My second question goes to the disasters. Do we define what a natural disaster is? And forgive me if I've overlooked it, please. Or a disaster in general.
So I, I want to, I don't think, we don't have a definition of natural disaster. And when we don't, because when we, we can't define everything in our definitions for a zoning code. So when we don't have a definition, and I believe this is in the primary section of the code, we default to the general definition within a dictionary for a natural disaster. So natural disaster generally, an act of God, I think is normally how it's, how it's described. But then it also does include, what we also included was criminal behavior of someone other than the owner or unintentional fire.
Okay. Okay, my last question is more of an explanation. Forgive me, but I'm really having a hard time with this drive-through stacking. So how does this process work? I mean, are we retroactively going back to these businesses? Or is this a condition? I guess how are we holding these businesses accountable?
So this is not retroactive. This is when someone wants to put in a new restaurant, they have to come to us to go through the review process before it comes to planning commission and before it comes to you. So during the review process, when we are analyzing, that is when we can point to this new portion and say, we think this is going to require additional stacking because of the way it's circulating, because of, you know, its adjacency to, you know, this public thoroughfare. And at that point, so this isn't, this isn't something that we're coming, like, after the fact, we're saying, okay, well, city council and planning commission can later say. Like, this is for us to be able to point to it when we're going through the review process with the developer to say, hey, this, this isn't going to work the way you're proposing it. We need additional stacking. Whereas right now, if we said, hey, this isn't going to work, they would say, well, your code says I just need this. And that's what we're doing.
Okay. That makes a lot more sense to me. And then to address Mr. Lewis's concern with the differences in the definition of drive-throughs.
So the reason, so there is a definition for restaurant that includes drive-throughs, so drive-through restaurant. The drive-through that he is referring to is the other, everything except restaurants, because there are all sorts of different kinds of drive-throughs. Ones where the beer drive-through is the, so, yeah. So this is, we separated the two because they're really two completely separate things. So that the drive-through that Mr. Lewis is referring to is that, that kind of drive-through. When you go to our definition of restaurant, it specifically talks about restaurants and their drive-throughs. That definition specifically excludes restaurant drive-throughs.
So this applies solely to restaurant drive-throughs or all drive-throughs?
Solely to, there's, in that section, it says these include but are not limited to such activities as vehicle gas pumps, drive-in banks, drive-through restaurants, drive-through restaurant lanes, and drive-in retail outlets. The only place we're really having an issue is obviously with restaurants. You're not going to see this kind of stacking issue, you know, at a bank or something like that. But it allows us to have, if there, if we thought that there might be, it still allows us to have that flexibility as well.
That's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Councilmember Doherty.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'd also like to thank staff. I hear about a number of these issues in the community. So it's very forward-thinking, and thanks for getting ahead of it. And having chaired the Board of Zoning Appeals, it's also very useful to have a code that's up to date, et cetera. So thank you for that. I also live on the edge of the tornado zone, and I think a lot of people are very thankful for the city's position on non-conforming structures and the way that that was approached. And a lot of people really appreciated the grace from the city. So, so thank you.
I believe two questions. One is a point of clarification on the accessory dwellings. On the presentation, it said A1, R1AA, and R1A lots. But in the code, I believe it also adds R1B.
R1B as well, I'm sorry. Yes. So the, the sections are separated, and R1AA, R1A, and R1B are all grouped together. So yes, that one is included. Because R1B is still a single-family residential zoning district. We didn't want to move into two-family residential districts to have two families and then also have an additional accessory dwelling unit. We thought that might be a bit, a bit much, a bit of a stretch. So we just wanted to stick to the one-family residential districts.
Thank you. On the rear lot line, again, I like the thinking in terms of measurement. I know there are cases that come up. Maybe this is an impossible question, but in terms of the metric, in terms of the measurement to the back of the lot, there's the 10-foot. But it assumes a flat road in the front. What about a curved road? That comes up periodically.
It does.
In cases of, just kick that to the Board of Zoning Appeals and...
Well, generally, when it comes to, if you, I guess it would be easier if I had a diagram, but if, when we're measuring setback lines, if we do have a curved road, what we do is follow the same curve at that, if it's a 40-foot front yard setback, 40 feet back, and then follow that same curve at all points, 40 feet. So your front setback would also be curved. So that's, that's generally how we enforce that section of the code whenever we're approving zoning permits.
Thank you. Appreciate the clarification. And I think for Councilmember Schwartz, in terms of a definition of natural disaster, I believe that comes from the federal government, from FEMA, and then we take it as I believe how it works. So they define natural disaster rather than us, is the way I've taken it in the code. But I'm open to correction if I'm mistaken.
I mean, that makes sense. I mean, when you're declaring a natural disaster, generally there have to be some sort of parameters.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Bales.
Okay. I don't want to beat this around too much, but talking about the drive-through stacking again, just to kind of go off of what Councilwoman Schwartz was saying. So you're going to try and anticipate the number of cars? I mean, because it's different, you know, they have a timing that gave you, you talked about that. But can you tell me your rationale again for not believing their timing or?
In the case of Dunkin' Donuts, their timing is wrong. Like, the timing that they told us, I have sat in the line, it's not correct. So I think corporate is going to give you a specific time to meet your requirements. I'm not saying everybody does that, but that seems to be the case because they, like, I don't want to make them seem like, make these corporate entities seem like the bad guys, but they're trying to buy the minimum amount of land possible, right?
Totally get it. Yep.
So they're going to justify their stacking in whatever way necessary to buy that minimum amount possible. And so they tell us numbers that sometimes, you know, we'll look at each other and be like, this doesn't seem right. And the number that Dunkin' Donuts gave us, I don't remember what it was specifically. It was something very, very short. It's just, it's, it's not accurate. And I think if, if we can, because for the most part, these issues are going to be coming up at chain restaurants, you know. It's Chick-fil-A's, it's Raising Canes, it's, you know, Dunkin' Donuts. It's not going to be so much at, you know, mom-and-pop restaurants. So at these types of restaurants, we, we can have some sort of benchmark. Like, we can go and look and sit in a, in a drive-through at another Raising Canes and get an average of how long this is actually taking as opposed to what they're telling us it's taking. And it's, it's become very apparent that that's something that we need to do. And so we need to change this section of the code to allow us to say, hey, this is going to cause a traffic issue. We need more stacking.
I don't disagree with what you're saying. Completely don't disagree. I understand, I get it. I just kind of wondered how you were going to do research on it, you know? If someplace from Memphis wants to come up here and build, we don't have any to determine, we think it's going to be the next hottest thing. How are you going to figure it out?
That, I mean, no, it's, it's very difficult, and especially, especially now. Like, is this the new normal? Is what's happening right now the new normal? Or is it going to back off a little bit? I don't know. Chick-fil-A is like five wide. It's, it's unbelievable.
All hours.
And you can't anticipate something like that. But to have something in our code the way it is right now, where it says, you just need this, it just, it's not working, and we have to do something, and we feel that this is the best way to do that.
I support the code change. I just wanted to know more about how you're practically going to figure it out to make a justified recommendation to a developer that they would buy in on.
I mean, it's, it's going to take, you know, phone calls to specific, I have called Raising Canes. I talked to them, you know, about, not to their corporate office, to their store in Engineering Apple. And, you know, talked to, how many employees do you actually have working? How many, you know, how long is it actually taking? So even if they are in Memphis, I can still pick up the phone. And generally, the general managers are pretty open to having discussions about those things because they don't want to be in the weeds.
Correct. And I don't think they want cars out in the right of way.
No, no, not at all. So, I mean, it's, it's going to take a lot more effort, but I think it's something that needs to be done and something more than what we have right now.
The other question I had was about pool covers.
Yeah.
And you kind of said it. Pool covers, an ASTM automatic pool cover is safer, studies have shown, than fences. My, I have family lives in Fishers, Indiana, and they don't have any fence requirements at all if you have an automatic pool cover.
Wow.
Because they're so sturdy and they're so, they're proven. So I'm just wondering, again, I mean, I would love to consider that because, quite frankly, I've heard from some people who have smaller lots, and they can't, with the fence setback and everything else, they can't put in a pool.
Yeah. I think, I think it's another one of those things that we don't want to jump right into. But there, there are other cities in the surrounding area that do not require fencing. Riverside is one of them, if you have one of those pool covers.
Well, they're, they're really effective now, and so I think it's something that...
From some of the statistics that I've read, there have never been any drownings with, in, since 1970-something, since, you know, at any home with a pool cover.
And aesthetically, it's very pleasing, too.
Yes. I agree.
Well, anyway, something I wouldn't mind seeing. That's all I have.
Okay. Councilmember Doherty.
My lawyer reminded me, and counselor, chime in here. A pool is defined as an attractive nuisance, and you, as the owner, have to be defending. Anything happens. All these things, fences, covers, all these are primarily defense mechanisms for you, the owner. I, I still feel a fence is needed, subjectively speaking. From what my attorney told me, he said, you're going to have it, the more protection you got, the better off you are because you're going to be on the spot. I don't know.
Counselor?
I wouldn't disagree. I mean, certainly, if you own a pool, there is inherent liability. There's no question about it. I mean, obviously, a responsible owner, the more you can protect yourself, frankly, protect the public, that's what you're doing, or protect little kids, the better you're off. You know, but I understand the argument. I mean, at a certain point, but on smaller lots, you would hope everyone would be responsible and shut the pools. But I, you know, it, still, we're talking human nature at a certain point, I guess.
The rationale was because smaller lots, more density, or, I mean...
Yeah. I mean, with the smaller lots, like you, when you're talking about anything less than 10,000 square feet, like, you're getting to the point where you're talking where the pool is going like edge to edge, you know, on a property. So we didn't want to take it that far. But again, we're, we're still, with this change, we're still proposing that you be required to put up a 42-inch fence.
Can you finish, sir?
Was this stacking issue, and everybody's beating it to death tonight, was this an issue before the pandemic but just never talked about much? I'm just wondering, how much of this is aggravated by having the doors closed? So you can't go in and you can't sit down.
Yeah. No, it's definitely aggravated by the pandemic. I believe Chick-fil-A still isn't, their dining room still is not open. But I, the Dunkin' Donuts was a pre-pandemic issue. That one was.
All right. Okay. Thank you, Your Honor. Flash Mary Adams, anything?
I think it's all been beaten to death here. So I guess we'll just go round and round. round and round, you know? And to quote, uh, Councilman Curran, the only question I have is on the motorhomes, the change there. Would, they have to be parked on a concrete slab?
Yes, that, that is not changing. That is, that has been a requirement, an improved surface, which is defined by concrete or asphalt or continuous brick pavers.
Okay, because, and then adding those trailers to that to limit the numbers would be good, because I see a lot of trailers sitting out in yards. That probably is not a good thing.
Absolutely.
So we need to correct that. So that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. A couple things. What do I want to start? So we'll start with the stacking. The, you know, something's got to be done, there's no doubt about it. And this is a, this is a process that you're trying to figure out. And I was, you know, clarified a little bit when you said it was not retroactive. It's not something. But it's the retroactive aspect that somehow needs to be figured out. I mean, I don't know if there can be penalties, you know, not particularly zoning code changes, but penalties in the, from the legal standpoint. If you're blocking the, you know, if you have traffic backed up out in the road, then there needs to, maybe we need to have citations to help take care of some of that. But one of the things that I do want to, for you to take another look at before coming back to second reading, please, and that is, I, I really would appreciate that only staff do the, make the judgment. It's, this goes back to, uh, handicap parking spaces. You know, we had a series of ti-, we had a time period where we had people that just wanted to arbitrarily pull out of a hat numbers. And we could have done that tonight with the emergency room. I mean, conceivably, half the parking lot could need handicaps parked. But that's, we had, we changed the code so that now we have a code to go by. And so I don't want it to be an arbitrary grab out of some number out of the hat for planning commission or for council.
I understand where you're coming from.
Okay. I think that when count, if staff uses this to do their homework and say, all right, whoever you're, the applicant is, you're going to have to do this because this is what we've determined. And you can pass that message then on to, in your process. But I don't think it's wise for us to open that, uh...
To...
That box open to discussion at planning commission. And, and, well, discussion's one thing, but to just arbitrarily throw conditions in that we add more and more and more. So I would appreciate if we would take a, a little bit, reword that somehow so that it is staff that's saying, we are taking this extra step because, and not something that just, okay, so I've said that clear enough. Uh, I'm going to move on then to the mother-in-law house, or whatever you want to call it. The rear yard setback is just 10 feet?
No, the rear yard setback is whatever the setback is in that respective district.
Even for this little, not like a shed.
Correct.
The shed can be 10 feet, but this has to be 50 feet. So you're almost going to have to have a whole acre lot before you can even do it.
Pretty close.
Be on the middle.
Yeah.
Okay. So that changes my attitude just a little bit, but it's still, it's, it's a Pandora's box that we're opening. Uh, I am, I am suspicious of having more than one dwelling unit on a lot.
Right, yeah.
Other than agriculture. Agriculture, you're allowed to do that under certain guidelines. So, because we, we throw in there, I think we mentioned R1A, we mentioned R1B. Well, those lots are not going to be big enough to do this anyway.
Uh...
R1A.
As far as residential lots go, most, most of the, most of the houses are not at the rear yard setback. For the most part, they're at the front yard setback. But most houses have significantly more than 50 feet back, uh, from that front yard setback. But I think at this point, because in the same way that you're hesitant, so are we, we don't want to open it up to absolute everybody, you know, so all of a sudden, anyone can come in and put in a granny pod.
I'm, I'm not sure I want to open it at all.
Yeah. So we're, we're trying to ease into it by, I'm not, I don't want to say make it as restrictive as possible, but put in a, some restriction where it isn't just available to, you know, to anybody to, to be able to just drop one in their backyard. You know, we want to look at, one of the reasons to not allow it 10 feet from the back property lines, you know, concerns with noise or, or light or, or that kind of thing.
I thought that's what you'd said earlier, but then I, I kind of thought somebody else might have thought it was different, but the, uh, so, is there any requirement to a relationship?
No. We, we, maybe Steve can speak more to this, but it's, it's very difficult for us to define families.
So I can put that, I don't have a backyard that I can do it in, but if I did, now I can have somebody, ask anybody off the street.
Yeah, just a tenant.
College kids, whatever.
That, yes.
Oh, man.
I, I'm...
No, like, it has to be the same electric. You can't split it off or anything like that.
Definition of a family.
But you're going to have to have your own water and sewer.
Nope. Well, water and sewer, but it's all the same.
Well, it could be one meter, though.
One meter.
I mean, I think, I think the, probably, I'm sure Sandra and Randy looked at this, but I guess the one concern I'd have too is being, this would be a great opportunity for some rentals too.
Yeah.
Which will be very difficult to control. You know?
There's the possibility, yes.
Yeah, Airbnb.
Yeah, I am, in fact, I got a complaint the other day about an Airbnb type of situation that I'll share with city manager later, but it, uh, I think we really need to take a really, really close look at this, uh, this particular section. But this is the first reading, so I'm not going to linger any further. This is the first reading. We'll have another. So I've expressed myself as much as I need to. So anybody else have anything they want to bring up before we move on? All right, thank you very much. Would you like to make a comment, please?
A couple things, just on the stacking regarding that. I will say that we have been working with Dunkin' for quite some time, and there is additional land to be purchased and a different, uh, drive-through plan that is, has been in the works. So there was additional options at that time. If we would have known and had the ability to do so, there was additional land and options for them to enhance that. It may not always be for a plot of land that there's additional land to be purchased, but in that case, there was, there is. Also, I will say this, as far as the additional stacking, what has been told many, many months ago, probably six months or so ago, Captain Sumner can re-relay this message to Chief Iarita, that any parking or any stacking onto our, our carrier roads, Lakeview, North Fairfield, the police are to not let that happen. We gave warnings, uh, we're to shoo them on for the safety. We cannot block roads as such. So that has been in the works. We're not ticketing anybody, but the police will get them off. So, you know, if the retail or the restaurant realizes that they're losing business, because if they're not able to take care of it or not get cars through fast enough, they are going to, to lose business. But for public safety purposes, we can't be having our main roads blocked like that. So that's been going on, and we'll make sure that is, continued to be enforced.
Is there, is there the, the legal ability to ticket?
Uh, they're blocking a road, so yes.
Sure. All right, so that's...
We haven't gone that far.
I know, but...
We're shooing them on.
Okay, thank you. So, do I have a motion to move this on to the second reading?
Mayor, I move, motion to move ordinance 21-12 to the second reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to move ordinance 21-12 on to the second reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Thank you. We're through that. Next is public hearing, PC 21-1.
Case number PC 21-1, for the purpose of reviewing and update for the zoning code.
Thank you. Mr. McHugh?
Yes, Mayor, Council. You have before you, and it was also referenced in the first section of, in the last ordinance, there was a definition change, if you noticed that, with respect to adult entertainment facilities that would exclude what is covered under this ordinance, which is life sex act businesses prohibited. I attempted to provide a legal opinion, providing that these are not First Amendment protected, not Fourteenth Amendment protected, that it's not due process taking situation. The courts have held, federal courts, and mostly out of Phoenix, that this is something that can be regulated and can be prohibited. And so you adopted several weeks or months ago, a moratorium that expires in September. And as a result of that, we've studied this, we have several studies that are attached. And so this is the culmination of that with a, a definition that now would define it, because we, that was the first thing we had to do, is define it away from adult entertainment facilities and businesses. So this is what you have, and this is the intent of it.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Does anyone here this evening that would like to address counsel on this public hearing? Seeing none, we will move on. It is now council input, where I'm not going to go around the room. Anybody have anything they want to have a question on or any input? Do I have a motion to move this to the second reading?
I move ordinance 21-13 to the second reading, Your Honor.
Second. I have a motion and a second to move ordinance 21-13 on to the second reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Thank you. Next, ordinance resolutions and PUDs, ordinance 21-14.
Ordinance number 21-14, to approve supplemental appropriations and certify additional revenue for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2021, and ending December 31, 2021, and to amend ordinances 21-09, 21-06, and 20-33.
Thank you.
Good evening.
The pathway, it's all yours.
Thank you. So the first couple of item, items relate to the local coronavirus relief fund, and the senior center applied for a secondary grant through the State of Ohio Division of Aging and was awarded $10,000. That's required to be spent by September 30th of this year for CARES-related expenditures. With this grant, the senior, the center intends to purchase two privacy computer desks, a portable PA system for outdoor events, outdoor seating to help in social distancing, and additional PPE for the transportation vans. They will also use some of this funds to reimburse the center for expenses from this past year, including a dry sanitizing system and special event supplies used for drive-through events such as disposable containers and packaged utensils. Therefore, $10,000 needs to be certified as grant revenue, and an additional $10,000 needs to be appropriated as miscellaneous operating supplies. The golf course also applied for a secondary grant through the Small Business Relief Grant for bar and restaurant assistance, and they were awarded $2,500 in grant money to use for coronavirus relief funding. These funds will be used to purchase iPads that have credit card processors to handle credit transactions remotely on the course for food and beverage purchases. So this grant in the amount of $2,500 needs certified as grant revenue and appropriated in the amount of $2,500 for computer equipment and software. And the supplemental appropriations are also required for the Parks Levy Fund. The fitness room floor at the senior center needs to be replaced. In November of last year, humidity testing was done on the floor, which indicated high humidity on the floor, and this high humidity has caused issues with the flooring. Based on testing results, recommendations were made to add rainwater gutters and to seal cracks between the building and asphalt, which were completed by public service staff. The second humidity test was done in February of this year. Humidities levels were down slightly, but not enough to resolve the problems. Therefore, staff would like to replace the flooring with MAC 100 Clear Epoxy, which will completely seal the floor, and then install a rub core flooring system on top of the epoxy. This rubberized surface has been used in both professional and collegiate sports facilities and comes with a 15-to-20-year warranty. To complete this project, they are requesting that $64,910 to be appropriated, and these funds will be taken from fund balance, which increased in 2020 due to reimbursement of the expenditures related to the CARES Act for COVID-19 expenses. And the fund balance will remain over the 20% threshold, even with utilization of these funds. And finally, as part of the American Rescue Plan Act passed by the federal government, the city is slated to receive coronavirus local fiscal recovery funds. These funds are designed to mitigate the public health emergency with respect to COVID-19, the negative economic impacts, provide government services related to lost revenue during the pandemic, and make investments in public infrastructure. So the most recent estimate of funds to be allocated to the city is approximately $5 million. Funds will be distributed in two batches. The first half of the funds are slated to be distributed in June or July of this year. And then the second half of the, of the $5 million is slated to be distributed approximately 12 months from the first distribution, which would be sometime mid-2020. So in order to receive and expend these funds for their intended purpose, the city must certify the revenue in the amount of $2,500,460, as well as appropriate these funds, and the same amount to cover the allowable expenditures. So in conclusion, staff recommends adopted, adoption of ordinance 21-14.
All right, thank you. Any questions? That's a lot to take in.
It is a lot to take in.
Badly needed, Your Honor.
None? If you have a question, please ask. All right. But we, we, we're far enough along, though, that we can appropriate the funds as well as setting up the accounting receiving line.
Yep, yep, yep.
Okay. All right. Do I have a motion then?
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance 21-14.
Second?
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 21-14. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Curran?
Yes.
Councilmember Duer?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwartz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Adams?
Yes.
Councilmember Bales?
Yes.
Mayor Stone?
Yes. All right, thank you. Next, Resolution 21-21. Uh, this is a funding application for Grange Hall Road improvements. Uh, Mr. Norman, you're going to handle that one for us.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Evening, Mayor, members of city council. Um, staff has recently informed the Ohio Public Works Commission will be accepting new funding applications until July 16th. Upon learning about this grant opportunity, we've reviewed our five-year capital plan, funding availability, and the potential scoring for, for different products and different applications. Based upon that review, it's our recommendation that an application be submitted for the Grange Hall Road widening project. Uh, the Grange Hall Road widening project is planned for construction in the spring of 2023, and would run between Summerfield Drive and Kemp Road. It'd be a similar treatment to many of the projects we've done over the last several years. It would, it consists of adding curb, gutter, storm sewer, and pedestrian facilities to both sides of the roadway. Um, right now, there's a, our estimated construction cost for these improvements is about $3.5 million. Uh, to date, we've already secured a little bit more than $2.2 million in grant funding from the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission, and we would recommend this, uh, this new grant application be submitted for $868,000 additional dollars to further reduce the city's share of construction costs. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Please.
Your Honor, I got a question. Is there bike lanes built into this?
No, there, there are not, sir. Um, is, there is, we have a sidewalk on the side where the houses are, and we have an eight-foot side path along the western side of the project.
Sidewalks?
Yeah, it's a, it'll be a wide sidewalk on the, the west side.
But they, they're, they're wide enough for bikes.
Would they be permitted to ride on that?
Uh, yeah, actually, uh, there's no, there's no restrictions in the city's ordinances about bicycles on... Yeah, actually, there's no, there's no restrictions in the city's ordinances about bicycles on sidewalks. So you could ride a bicycle on the, on the five-foot sidewalk.
Because that's Grange Hall Road, like a lot of the roads, the bike's right out in the middle, there's 15 cars. And they can't possibly, the bike can't possibly make the eligible speed requirement, and you got all these.
Absolutely. There's no, there's no bike lanes on this proposed.
I understand. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Great use of appropriate grant funding.
Right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, motion to approve Resolution 21-21.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 21-21. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Thanks, Jeff. All right, council time, and look at the clock now. Ooh. Councilmember Kern, would you like to start?
Yeah, I'll start us. Tomorrow, the senior citizens have their Fourth of July picnic, Your Honor, at Lofino Park underneath the shelter, and that starts at 11:00, and it's over at 2:00. And then, of course, Fourth of July coming up here Sunday, we want to encourage all our residents to come out and support this great event, parade, and subsequent activities at Rotary Park. I think it's just a great opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Schwartz?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to echo some of the comments that Councilmember Kern made. Again, I hope everyone will join us for the Fourth of July, and just want to send a special thanks out to UES for their continued sponsorship of our fireworks show. It's definitely something that will bring the community together, and very excited to have a large in-person event. I also would like to thank Beaver Creek Kiwanis, the Mall at Fairfield Commons, and the Beaver Creek Police Department for the Touch a Truck event. From, I unfortunately was unable to attend due to work commitments, but it looked like a resounding success. I saw plenty of pictures, tons of children, so very glad to see that. Last, I also want to encourage the community. I think we will not have a meeting before this event, but the Mall at Fairfield Commons is also gonna be holding their Red, White &amp; Brew on July 10th, so encourage our community members to come out and see additional set of fireworks. That's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Duer?
Thank you, Mayor. One of the privileges I have in the community is I serve as a deacon of our church at University Baptist Church. Deacons provide care to the community, and, but I have the opportunity to preach on July the 4th. So I'm preaching on what the Bible says about citizenship from Philippians 3:20. And so the service begins at 9:50. It's an outdoor service, so bring lawn chairs at the corner of Haynes and Kemp, 2223 Haynes Road in Beaver Creek, July the 4th. I'd like to have, say a big thank you to Kim Farrell and the Parks Department for the family recess. I had the opportunity to attend with my family, and it was an overwhelming success. So thank you, Kim. You did amazing work in the community, and thank you to Katie for the pictures. I think the community really, really enjoyed that. Had a chance to do some running along the improvements at Kemp Road, and want to thank Public Works for the outstanding work. The sidewalk looks great, the road looks great, so thank you. And then finally, to thank UES as well for the fireworks and the contribution, and to echo Councilmember Schwartz's comments, just real thankful for their involvement in the community. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Council, or Councilmember Bales?
I just wanted to say that last Friday, I attended the Rotary Club meeting in person. It's my first time, this is my second time back in person. My first time there. It was very nice to get back together with that club who does so much for our community, so I'm glad for that. And I did stop out at the amateur radio, ham radio event this week, this weekend at Fire Station 61. And those guys really have an elaborate operation that can really help our community. So I'm glad that I did that and became more educated on what they do. And finally, just happy Fourth of July to everyone. I hope you have a safe and happy holiday.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Yeah, I attended that ham operators deal out there, too. Those guys, they told me that during the night, they were talking to people from Hawaii and Europe, and so they were making a lot of contacts. I attended the Touch a Truck event, and thank you Kiwanis and Fairfield Commons Mall for doing that. I was amazed at the turnout. I mean, there were, you couldn't find a place to park, first of all, and then there were kids and parents everywhere, so it was really nice to see that out there. I had an opportunity to attend a reunion of the Beaver Creek J.C.s. I was a Beaver Creek J.C. back in the '70s, and we had a reunion this past Saturday night. And we had 29 people there that were involved in that back in that time. It was a very big part of Beaver Creek back in those days. In fact, Fred Berger was there, our first mayor.
Yeah.
And Steve Klein, who was a township trustee. Bob Doyle was a state representative. So there was a lot of, a lot of leadership came out of that, that group, so it was really a good time for me. The other thing is I, I look forward to seeing everyone this weekend for the Fourth of July. Come out and enjoy the festivities. I think it'll be a lot of fun. Thank you, sir.
I think most everything's been covered. I've attended a lot of the events that have been discussed, and it, things are picking up. It's nice to see people face-to-face. It's nice to be able to have events that we can provide to the public. And people are so eager to get out, and I think that accounts for a little bit for the, the large crowds. But in addition to those events already mentioned, the music in the park had its third, its third concert Sunday. And it's every Sunday except next Sunday. That happens to be the fourth.
That's great.
But those are, those are relaxing evening. I mean, they're just a good fun thing, just sit down. I watch the people as much as I watch the band, but it's, but it's a lot of fun. I know Katie was there last night taking pictures as well, and she, she had an audience of children that were more than happy to stand in front of her camera. So it's a lot of fun. With that, I just want to wish everybody a very safe and happy Independence Day holiday. And, you know, hopefully you can make it down for the fireworks or to the parade or both. And if for some reason you can't, or even if you can, we do have a secondary event that was already mentioned, and that's the Red, White &amp; Brew at the mall, so it's always a fun time as well. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to the city manager for his report.
Thank you, Mayor. Pretty much mentioned, you know, Fourth of July, you know, don't forget about the parade. This year, you know, the United States Air Force, the Rock Band Flight 1, that's going to be the entertainment at Rotary Park. If you haven't heard them before, they do rock it out, so '70s, '80s, you know, real popular songs that most everybody would sing along with. They'll take it up, right up to like 9:45, and then are planning to kick it off, the fireworks, probably with something like the National Anthem or something along those lines. So good time, be, be that the parade starts at 6:00, and like I said, then follow down to Rotary Park, where the festivities will continue. Down at Rotary Park, though, you know, the public health, if you haven't got your vaccine, they're going to be down there from 7:00 to 10:00 to offer this, so it's just, you know, why not? Walk-in's welcome. Just if you haven't had the opportunity, it's a time and place is, no place better than right then. So I just, we wanted to, we've partnered with Green County Public Health through this whole COVID, worked hand-in-hand with them, so we wanted to make them a part of our festivities, especially when we didn't know things were opening up as quickly, and we thought there would be a little bit more hesitant. But even with now that it's opening up even faster than we could have thought, we think that this is still a good idea, and we welcome public health to be part of it. And just about the resurfacing right now, you know, there's a lot going on with the resurfacing on the roads. Under the engineering tab, if you go to beavercreecohi.gov under slash engineering, you'll see the 2021 resurfacing list and curbs as well, but you can see if your street is listed. But crews are working in the area of Patterson Road. This year includes resurfacing about 14 centerline miles of roadways. I do want to stress, there'll be putting up temporary codes, cones to block. We've already had people blowing through cones, going on fresh pavement. It's a hazard to their car. You know, if that heat blows up their tires, ruins their tires, I mean, they're, and even worse, the cones are there for safety of the workers. Please watch out for the construction. You know, most of these roads are, that we're doing on resurfacing are the 25 mile an hour, 35 mile an hour neighborhoods. So please just don't cut through, don't, you know, please obey the cones. Yes, it may be, you may have to go around or something temporarily, but, you know, they make fast work of it. So please be patient on the resurfacing program. Dayton-Zenia Road, again, you know, everybody's glad Kemp is done. Dayton-Zenia is not far behind it. They're getting ready to, plans to, the curb is already done, so next will be the sidewalk, and then, of course, the asphalt in between, where the current asphalt ends to the curb, that's going to be completed very soon, probably this week. The project's on pace to be completed in late July, early August timeframe. Of course, the secret and key word there is "weather-dependent," but it's, it's coming soon, and that's gonna be great to have that project completed. And summer concert, that's been mentioned, but just, this July 11th is the next, is Pandora Project. So as Mayor said, every Sunday after that, we got all the way through August 8th. So please come and join us on Sundays at 7:00 PM at Lofino Park. And just wanted to make aware of our website. Thank you. Katie has jumped on here at some, you know, there's so much going on, so many park events. Some get their information from Facebook, some get it from watching this, who knows? From our newsletter that comes out quarterly. But we started putting our main events on our webpage. So on beavercreecohi.gov, if you scroll down to the bottom, there's a calendar and events tab. So the main events and programming that's going on there, as this shows, she's put that on there, so if you want to see what's going on, you can quickly go there and see if you're missing anything. Councilmember Kern had that suggestion on helping with a calendar, so this should help some with that. And of course, our city offices will be closed Monday, July 5th, and observance of July 4th. Always, non-emergencies can go to the police dispatch, 937-426-1225, and of course, 911 for emergencies. I did want to quickly cover one more thing, 'cause a lot of questions here lately, and that is aggregation. Aggregation program is underway. The opt-out letters have went out last week, and maybe a few are still trinkling in this week. But on our webpage, if you go down, you'll see the blue bar, you'll see aggregation. And you click on that aggregation, it'll take you to the page that has all the information, the contracts, and a link to the vendor, which is Dynegy, and it already has right here Dynegy Customer Care. There's the 1-800 number and the hours of operations. And if you click on the more about the program, it'll take you right to Dynegy's website, which is our aggregation provider. Here's a copy of the terms and conditions, the opt-out letter, and the fax, FAQs, frequently asked questions, and the price, prices as well. So information's there. If you have questions, please, please let us know, and that's all I have for tonight.
All right, and I gotta back up and add an item. I did get to attend the farewell for our vice commander out of Wright-Patt, Colonel Phillips. Unfortunately, you know, the commander and vice commander, they're here for two years at a time, and then they move on. But Colonel Phillips is staying here at Wright-Patt. He's just no longer gonna be the vice commander. But he was a very personable individual, was always eager to help wherever he could. And then lastly, I just want to make one final thanks to UES for their contribution tonight. Makes a big difference to this community. With that, citizen comments. Anyone have any comment? No one wants to talk to council tonight? All right, we'll move on. Executive session. Do I have a motion to go and enter into executive session?
Yes, Mayor. I move to enter into executive session pursuant to Section 121.22 of the Ohio Revised Code for the purpose of consideration of the employment of a public employee and the purchase of property for public purposes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to enter into executive session. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Schwartz?
Yes.
Councilmember Bales?
Yes.
Councilmember Duer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Adams?
Yes.
Councilmember Kern?
Yes.
Mayor Stone?
Yes. And for your information, there will be no decisions coming out of this executive session, so there'll be no action by this council when we return, other than to adjourn. So you're welcome to stay, but the televised portion will be terminated. Thank you.